That everyone is present, so we do have a forum. We're going to stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance both to the U.S. and the state of Texas, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Mr. John Blile is going to give us our invocation for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Father in heaven, we praise you for this day that you've given us. We praise you for all blessings that you give us every day. We ask that you help us to recognize those blessings. We know from your word, Father, that all good and perfect gifts come from you above, and we praise you for those. Father, lift up this city council to you tonight, ask that you would be with them as they make decisions on behalf of the citizens of Shenandoah. I pray for your wisdom and understanding to be bestowed upon them as they deliberate and make decisions that will benefit the citizens and benefit the employees as well. Father, lift the employees up to you, the staff. Pray for wisdom for them as they do their jobs every day here at the city. Also, we ask for protection for the police department, police officers here that provide protection to all the citizens in the city. We ask for protection on our way home tonight, and we ask that all these things, through your son's name, Jesus, pray all these things in his name. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. Citizens are invited to speak for three minutes on matters relating to city government that relate to agenda or non-agenda items. Speakers are asked to stand up and approach the podium to address council and give their name before sharing their comments. First in line, we have Mr. Frank Robinson.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Frank Robinson, and I am a resident of Shenandoah. First, I want to thank you, Councilman McLeod. I want to thank you for 10 years of exemplary service to our community. You've been a wonderful council member, and we all thank you for that. Second, with much encouragement from friends, neighbors, and my lovely bride of 35 years, I am announcing my candidacy to fill the open seat created by Councilman McLeod's decision not to seek reelection. I've been a resident of Montgomery County for 21 years and have devoted my life's work to public service. I've served in a number of executive-level roles over my 38 years in local government as a CEO, chief of police, or city manager. Most notably perhaps is my service of 14 years as president of the Woodlands Township formerly known as the Town Center Improvement District of Montgomery County. This special purpose district created by the Texas Legislature played a pivotal role in the development of the downtown of the Woodlands, coordination of public safety efforts with neighboring cities such as Oak Ridge North and Shenandoah, and was responsible for economic development projects such as the Marriott Hotel Convention Center and Market Street. Planning for my retirement, my wife and I bought a home in Shenandoah in 2015, and I retired from public service in 2017. We chose Shenandoah as a place to live because we knew about the wonderful history of the governance and the fiscal responsibility of this city. When combined with location, low taxes, low water rates, and so many other amenities, our decision was a no-brainer. Since moving to Shenandoah, we've become even more enamored with the city and especially with the talented, well-informed, and friendly citizens. The coordination between the city council and the civic club in sponsoring events that involve large numbers of volunteers along with city personnel is extraordinary. It is easy to understand why the vast majority of our residents have such pride in our city and have no intention of moving anytime soon. I am running for this office to utilize my experience, my past relationships with leaders and surrounding entities, and to continue the 50-year-old history of excellence in Shenandoah government. I pledge to be a servant leader, a good listener, fiscally responsible, and always watching out for the safety and well-being of our residents. I ask for your support and your vote, and thank you very much.
Next up is John Samuelson.
John Samuelson, I'm going to defer to a future meeting for my comments.
Thank you. Next up, Charlie Ballmer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to start by saying that I was saddened to hear that you weren't going to run for that position again. Mike, you've done a fantastic job, and I want to just extend beyond the fact that you live next to me, the gratitude as a resident of Shenandoah for the things that you've done for this community. So, very, very thankful for that. And I'm also very thankful, I don't know who else will run for positions that are going to be in scope for this upcoming election, but I am glad that we've got qualified people that won't be able to fill your shoes, but may do a pretty darn good job trying. Second thing I wanted to say is that I was really impressed by the amount of communication that went out, and although we had to postpone that IDC meeting with planting and zoning earlier in January, it was, it was, I always think there's a lot of communication, but that was an exceptional amount of communication for an issue that's very important for residents. I happen to live pretty close to that area, and so I see some of the things that have been impacted by the lack of ability to develop in that area. So, I'm very much looking forward to the rescheduling of that and the hearing that would go along with that. We've got a minute and 50 seconds, so I think that's about time for 23 verses of happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Councilman Pollard, happy birthday to you. I'll stop it at this one, but happy birthday.
You missed me and Ted, so.
It's always, we always get missed, don't we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six, Presentation of the Monthly Capitol Project Report.
Okay, December, MDD did not meet, and we did not meet this month because we were frozen out as well, so. Just the highlights on the report. David Memorial is on target to be completed in March this year. I-45 is pending text ad approval, and then we'll be able to bid that. Vision Park, Scout totally approves of the sidewalks that have been built around the pond, and he enjoys that extra walk. And we also completed the Cedarwood Reserve headworks, so that kind of rounds up the report, so any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to item number seven, Presentation of a proclamation declaring April 26, 2024 is Arbor Day.
Mayor and Council, it's that time of year again to make our Arbor Day proclamation. You'll find that in the packet there. So, the Arbor Day event has been scheduled for March 2nd from 9:00 in the morning till noon at the Public Works Building, as we've done in the past. However, the National Arbor Day that we are recognizing is going to be April 26th. We just have our event a little sooner in Texas because our planting season is a little earlier than most of the country. Our staff recommends approval of the proclamation, and it's a required component of our application for tree sitting and maintain our tree city status.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Brott. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I need to read this? All right, we're going to move on to item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action to Appoint Members to the Sick Pool Committee.
Council, this is an annual step that we take to reappoint members to the Sick Pool Committee whose terms have expired. You'll see in your agenda pack the recommended appointments. If any of you need any background on the Sick Pool, I'm happy to provide it. This is otherwise a routine process.
I'm sorry, could you, what do the Sick Pool Committee people do?
Well, the Sick Pool was put in place around 2010, 2011, and it allows employees to donate PTO time to a pool. And so if an employee has a catastrophic event, an injury, an illness, something like that where it's going to require a lot of time that they may not have PTO for, they can draw from this pool in blocks of time. What the committee does is they review the situation, and we get any information that might be required without violating anybody's privacy, or, you know, it's all confidential. But it, the committee makes sure that we have the information that's required and that they do, they're eligible for the Sick Pool.
That's great.
This is a, so this committee is all together on an as-needed basis.
Correct, yes, sir.
So, that's not.
And another policy that was added a while back was a, the ability for someone, an employee who's enrolled in the Sick Pool, and to enroll, you have to contribute a minimum of eight hours of PTO one day. So, if an employee is enrolled in the Sick Pool and then they come up short on PTO for a non-emergency situation, then other employees are allowed to donate PTO to that employee, you know, a more, a smaller block of time. So, that's another, another benefit of being in the Sick Pool.
Make a motion to approve the members as presented.
Second.
So, I would like to get a clarification on this. We are suggesting to reappoint Jeremy Thompson, Tammy Daly, and Leslie Stevens, and we're going to be replacing John Maynor with Billy Adams. Is that?
That's correct.
Is that what's being proposed? Okay, I just want to be clear that that's what's being proposed.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Brott and seconded by Councilman Raymaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. In ordinance of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, providing for the holding of a general election to be held on May 4, 2024, for the purpose of electing mayor and two city council members, positions one and five, and providing for details relating to the holding of such elections.
Council, this is another annual step that we take to call the election.
Can I ask a question now, or am I?
Motion to approve.
We have, hold on. We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Fletcher.
Fletcher.
Yeah? Discussion.
Discussion. What happens if only one person applies for the open position that we have on the council and nobody else applies for the other positions? Do we still have an election, or?
No, sir, we would cancel it, and that would come to council for official action.
And how much would we save, would the city save if we canceled it?
Around 15, 17,000.
Yeah, last year was about 16,000.
$15,000?
Mm-hmm.
Is that it? That's it? No more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Following Agreements with Montgomery County for the May 4, 2024 city election, Election Services Agreement and the Joint Election Agreement.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. We're going to skip item number 11. We're going to put that on, I think, the next agenda?
The 28th.
The 28th agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to move, we're going to switch number 12 and 13 around. We're going to do number 13 first. Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a New Patrol Officer Position.
Mayor and Council, during the budget workshop, the police department proposed the addition of two additional patrol officers. At that time, there was one vacancy of a current position due to promotion to sergeant. So, at that time, the council decided to fill those two positions prior to approving that third, and that would bring, it would be brought back mid-year. This last testing selection, the police department had three very good candidates, so the two have been filled, and there is a third position that the police department wants to fill at this point and improve into the budget. As you'll see, I did a prorate it, what the increase to the budget would be. We are looking at revenues, we are fine to add that position at this time. And if there's any other questions, Chief Donlap can answer those for you.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion?
Just quickly, I know you've been chief since '21?
Twenty.
Twenty. So, we're going to your fourth year. Since you've been here, from looking at the numbers, it looks like our crime in our city has dramatically decreased on personal crime in the residential area. Do you, can you just give us any reason as to why? And with these extra officers, is it going to help you make it even better?
Yes, so, when I first came to you, I had a philosophy, and I had a vision of the department that I wanted to push forward with. And we, we came up with a plan, and we moved forward with that plan. And that plan was to reduce the amount of time that the officers had that was taking up their time doing things that they needed to be out on the street. And such the Woodlands time, having to patrol the Woodlands, that contract, we worked on that. Code enforcement, those are things that we tried to reduce the amount of time that they focused on that and tried to focus more on the active patrol and active proactive police work, actively hunting and looking for criminal activity. So, since that time, yes, it has had an impact from what we can see on our stats. It's had a huge impact in the residential area. I can bring back, once we get, collect all our data, I can bring back all the data to council and show you all that, that the crime in the residential area has dramatically reduced. You can actually see the numbers.
I have personally been in the field with several officers over the last several months, most recently three weeks ago, and I will tell you from what, straight from the officers' mouths, they, they feel the culture change that's happened in the police department, and they are so proud of the fact that they are out hunting for criminals on a daily and nightly basis. They are covering our city like you just cannot believe, and their heads are like baubles, driving through every neighborhood, through every parking lot, looking in hotels, looking where the businesses are, looking for criminal activity, and they find it. And I've seen them find it just because of their investigative and observation skills. They are looking for criminals, and I submit to you that adding these extra police patrol officers will make even a better impact on our city. These people are working like crazy because they've been shorthanded, they've had some technological obstacles to overcome recently, that they are doing it. A great job, and I can hardly wait for you to get your three new patrol officers on the street as soon as possible.
Absolutely, thank you. And that's, that's been the vision all along, is to try to get these officers to where that's what they focus on, is proactive police work.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Just for the, for the public's knowledge, what would the, the number of police officers would that make with this approval?
It's, it's 28 total for, for the whole police department.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Police Purchases from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Mayor and Council, this is a regulatory, regular procedure to expense funds from this restricted fund. With the three new additions, we do need to buy body armor, which are the bulletproof vests, the angel armor vests. As you'll see, three of them comes to about $7,500, and this would be all funded from the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, Discussion and Possible Action to Ratify the Accounts Payable for December 2023.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Raymaker.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Council inquiry.
We have civic club updates and city administrator updates.
What are you doing?
If, if Mr. Ballmer has some.
Got me all excited there. So, good evening again. Just a couple of dates from the civic club, one kind of piggybacking on Joseph's comment earlier around Arbor Day, so we will be supporting the Arbor Day event happening on March the 2nd from 9:00 to 12:00 over here in the Public Works Building. There are going to be sapling giveaways, the Parker and I group's going to be here, the city landscape company that does our city landscaping will be there doing giveaways. Most importantly, we've got some incredibly knowledgeable volunteers that'll be there around planting and growing, you know, all kinds of green life. So, definitely an optimist activity. The second slash third event happens to be on the same day for just a matter of coincidence. This year, our Trash Bash and our Easter event for the civic club happens on the same day, so that'll be March the 23rd. The Trash Bash, as usual, is from 8:00 to 12:00 for residents of Shenandoah. During that time, we will also be doing the volunteer, I'll be driving around and picking up everybody, not everybody, but folks that have difficulties transporting some of the bigger things, I'll be doing that as well. I'll give a reminder as we get a little closer to the event. But also, just as a heads up, for that day from 10:00 to 12:00, so it'll overlap the last two hours of the Trash Bash, will be the Easter event at our, our main city park. So, we'll, volunteer-wise, we'll, as we get a little closer to the event, we'll announce, hopefully we get maybe some help from our, from our volunteer group as well to do stuffing of the baskets for the prep for that event. And then I won't, I don't know if I'm going to say anything tonight, but I don't want to stomp on any of your things, but we do have the city 50th anniversary coming up. I won't get into the city details of that, but I will say the civic club will be supporting that event. We're excited and very much looking forward to that. That should be huge. And then one kind of final thing in there is that the Montgomery County Safety Expo is April the 6th. That's from 11:00 to 1:00. It's a really, really cool event. If you've never been, our police department and the surrounding MOCO safety, folks do an absolutely amazing job. I was, last year when they did the presenting, the colors, our, what is, what is the name of that group chief that does the?
The honor guard.
The honor guard. So, they did an absolutely fantastic job of presenting the colors. So, another optimist, just one of the many, 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 many things that Shenandoah brings to our area. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thanks.
City attorney updates. City administrator update.
I have a few for you, Council. First of all, we have some status photos from Lyle Engineering, the David Memorial Project. I'm going to ask Krista to put those up so you can see the, the progress that's happening with this. This is the bridge. That's in the county jurisdiction. And then the, this is, this is the paved road. This is as of about two weeks ago. Mr. Blile updated me that there has been more concrete poured since then, so it's looking great. It's happening. So, I just wanted you all to see it for yourself if you haven't had a chance to drive over Secondly, the city entry signs, those are on our Capitol Project Plan. There's three of them. Those are nearing, they're going to be completed later next month. The demo work and the setting of the piers and foundations are, should be done by end of next week, and the signs should be completed around February 20th, weather permitting. So, good progress on that. The Water Plant 3, the drainage improvements there have started, so that project is underway. And then finally, the polar bear plunge took place on January 6th. Eric, it was about 46 degrees out, and the water temp was about 59 degrees, and we had eight people who were brave enough to jump in the water, and they're a whole lot braver than I would be, so it was, it was a fun event. And that's all I have.
All right, I drove by the Tamina, the site of the Tamina Water Plant for Phase 2 of the Tamina Project, and I saw that it's well underway, and I think it's about 90% complete. Is that right, Mr. Blile?
Yes, the clearing.
The clearing, yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's great. That's, that's great to see, great to hear. All right, we're going to move on to council inquiry.
Okay, now, we got a full boat of things coming up, as Charlie just mentioned, so really appreciate the effort of the civic club to put on these things and, and the effort that the staff does to put these things together as well. I did notice that Courtney's 50th anniversary banners are out and about, and so she's going to pretend like I'm not mentioning this. But I did see one communication on the 50th that come out this week, so I'm assuming that other things are coming in the mail and?
That's correct.
And through other, other channels.
We'll be doing a mailer, and Debbie's working on pushing that out through social media, so we're going to, we're going to be really ramping up that promotion.
Okay, I'll be looking forward to seeing those. Thanks.
I'm good.
Just one question, easy. The Vision Park Pond is beautiful. It's gorgeous. What is the status on the veterans memorial portion of it?
That is going to be coming to council at the next council meeting on the 14th. We're going to present designs that were, the mayor formed a committee, they met, I guess it was around May of last year, and they unanimously selected a concept, and we've been fine-tuning that, we've been working on the budget, we took some bids to kind of test our, our estimates that we had, and we'll be bringing those to council at the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
We had some really, really good resident input from the committee of veterans that are from the community and Tamina.
Councilman Brott?
I'm good.
Councilman Pollard?
I'm good tonight.
All right. I have one item. I want to recognize the passing of a longtime resident of Shenandoah. I don't know if any of you knew Mr. Lynn Clu, is that, am I pronouncing his name right? Clu, yeah. He lived in the area where, where subdivision on Wellman, you know, the, the?
I think he lived on Hurley Lane.
Hurley Lane?
Yeah, Hurley.
You lived down, you lived down Hurley?
What used to be Hurley Lane.
Right.
He lived back there for a number of years. His? His spouse died back in November, she was 90-some-odd years old. He's, he has been, they have been a long-time resident of, of the community. I just want to acknowledge her passing, so keep her, the Clu family, in your prayers. We're going to move on to executive session. According to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, is follows. Item number one, it's 551.076, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits, and 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Time is 7:31. We're going to suspend.